I'll let you do it. Here, come on, come, come start the meeting. Let's start this meeting. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll ask everybody to rise for prayer and pledge, please. I'll ask Councilman Breschers to lead us in that.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer to thank you for another day of life and another meeting to handle business of the city. I do pray for wisdom and discernment and that we would all be blessed with such and, Lord, that we would just seek to honor you in all we say and do. And I pray this in the name of our Savior Jesus. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do roll call, please?
Lamar?
Here.
Shropshire?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Breschers?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Here.
Brown-Kay?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Okay, I do have some listed petitions from the audience. I do not see any of them here, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have any items that need to be pulled on the consent agenda?
L and M, does it go together?
C, J.
Okay, any others? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All but C, J, L, and M. A motion from Gonthea.
I'll second.
And a second from Shropshire. We'll call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, item C, approved claims for purchase orders through May 20th, 2025.
Motion.
I have a motion from Shropshire.
Second.
Second from Brown.
I'd like to hold one and let you look into it. Two, four, two, zero, two, four, two, five, six, two.
So, any others? Any other discussion? Okay, I need a motion to approve all with the exemption of PO two, four, two, zero, two, four, two, five, six, two.
I'll make that motion.
Did you get that, Hannah?
Two, four, two, oh, two, four, two, five, six, two.
I'll change my motion to that.
Second.
Question.
Yes.
That purchase order that was numbered, what is that one for?
That one is an Amazon Capital Services. I'll pass it down for you to look at. Well, he's looking at that. We had the motion changed from Choya and a second from Brown.
You're asking that this one be pulled separate and checked into?
Okay. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Okay, item J, approved expenditure in the amount of three thousand two hundred and fifty to Gale. That's G-A-L-E, not some lady named Gale. For online resources, including the renewal of Chilton's Auto Repair Legal and the addition of National Geographic Kids in Context Elementary and Udemy, is that correct?
I don't know where the emphasis goes. It's either Udemy or Udemy or whatever you want to say.
Context Elementary and U-D-E-M-Y for 2005-20 to be paid from non-book materials account zero, two, 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 one, zero, or five, zero, three, two, and $1,000 to be paid from state aid account nine, two, nine, two, five, five, two, three, three.
Motion is stated.
Second.
Motion is stated from Brown and the second from Choya. Discussion?
Hey, I've used this and it's a very helpful service. It was on trial, I think, for a while.
Alright, you guys got an email from me a couple months ago to try all of these. We are dropping some to be able to afford the three new ones, so we're dropping Plan Builder, which was a business plan builder that got little to no use. And then we had a preschool resource that was called Miss Humblebee's Academy that also got very little use. So we dropped those from Gale and then a third one called Tumble Books. So it's basically the same cost as what we had before, but now we get all this cool stuff. And National Geographic Kids and Context Elementary work together and you can download entire issues of National Geographic Kids. So you don't have to have internet once you get that downloaded. And then Udemy or Udemy is, if you don't know, it's a, it's basically, if you can think of a class that you want to take, it's on there. So everything from getting your A-plus certification to learning how to make sourdough to, there's even a library management class. I wrote a bunch down. Cooking stuff, video game history, history of the world, but not with Mel Brooks. And mechanical things, that kind of stuff. So if we didn't have this subscription, those classes would cost our patrons at least $10 apiece, if not more than that, but with this, it's free.
I can tell you the auto repair one is very useful.
The Chiltons?
Yes.
Yeah, Chiltons is pretty cool. And then the legal forms is neat, too, because we get asked a lot, mostly for divorce papers, which is really sad, but also for like leases and wills and powers of attorney and that kind of thing. So people who can't afford a retainer fee for an attorney, we can at least give them the actual legal forms that they need.
Sounds cheaper than an attorney.
A little bit, a little bit. But we cannot give advice on how to fill it out because that's not what we do. You guys have any questions for me about these resources? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for that information. Further discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item L, approved expenditure in the amount of six thousand six hundred to the Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation for Defender Data Info Systems, Otis, to be paid from police investigation for the offender, I'm sorry, I skipped a line, from police equipment capital outlay account four, 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 five, five, four, two, four. The Otis reporting system will have an annual cost of $6,000 and will replace the current spillment system, which has an annual cost of $31,972 and .33.
So moved.
I have a motion from Gonthea.
Second.
Second from Brown.
The reason I'm bringing this out, and it would also apply to the following because they're together. The data is shared. We also can decide, we can control what we want out or not. And so if we approve this, I would just suggest we just discuss that at a later date. I talked with Jeremy. He says you can control it. It can be limited or not. And so that's what I just wanted to share.
Further discussion on that? Call for the vote.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Abstain.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item M, approving an expenditure in the amount of three thousand one seventy-four to Fiber Interactive Technologies for the server and software to support Otis Reporting System to be paid from police equipment capital outlay account four, 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 five, five, four, two, four. This software is necessary to support the Otis Reporting System. It will have a monthly cost of $274.
Motion.
We got a motion from Choya and a second from Gonthea. Discussion?
Is that monthly cost going to come out of the same account?
Okay, no further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Item four, mayor's report.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agenda items D, E, F, and G as written.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items B, E, F, and G as written. Further discussion? If none?
You'll read it?
There was a second.
The second was, who was the second? Chris, I'm sorry.
I don't think, I would be okay amending my motion to waive the reading. These are just the four actions, five items to hire the four part-time library assistants. I'm just trying to consolidate them and move on.
Good. Second the motion to, second and a motion to waive the reading as well as accept them all as written.
Are they here tonight?
They are. They're right here.
Okay, let's do this. Alexandra? Okay, Justin? Mary or Liz Mast, Liz or Mary?
I got Liz.
Okay, last week we had a cappuccino something, I don't know. And Matthew Morris, I'm guessing. Okay, awesome.
Welcome.
Well, let's make the vote and then we'll welcome. All right.
Hey, real quick, just a personal thing. My vote is not a reflection of the individuals. It is a reflection of my opinion of our financial state. So I just want that to be known.
Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Welcome.
Okay, mayor's report. Item A, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of $4,896.46 to High Sync LLC for special projects, Salt Branch, Regional SWD, and floodplain mapping revisions, shooting range evaluation, and FDP from general outside services account oh, two, two, oh, one, five, oh, seven, five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Gonthea and a second from Brown. So for those that are unaware, High Sync is our floodplain manager. That's Bill Smith is his name. He has been doing several projects for us. The latest was to do the evaluation on the area that will be the Sergeant Gene Beck Shooting Range. And so this is, this is his invoice for that specifically, and then a few other little small projects that he did for the Salt Branch and whatnot. So we just need to make sure that we get him paid.
So, quick question on that.
Yes.
And I, I don't necessarily have an issue with the Sergeant Gene Beck thing, but I do have a question with our attorney. If we're gonna name anything that's something part of the city, does that have to come before us formally to be done?
Or obloquely?
Okay. Okay. Right, perpetually.
Yeah, we don't, so when we get that done, we'll get that there. That's fair. All right, further discussion on that? We'll call for the vote.
Yes, I've got a question. Have these already, with these reports, when they're complete, can you make sure that they are forwarded to the council so we can?
Yes.
Have a copy of these?
Yes, I'll have him send me all those reports again. So basically, just so you're aware, what we get is he goes in and he does, like for the range, he looked at the, you know, there's a whole gamut of things that they look at, the endangered species stuff, they look at mitigation, the cut, the fill of the dirt that's there. Are we bringing in enough, taking out enough? Does it all work? And are the elevation levels the same? So it's actually kind of several reports come in and basically, basically, we get a thumbs up or a thumbs down. So I will make sure that he puts those reports together in the next couple of weeks and gets those two and I'll make those available, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm sorry. Didn't mean to rush you on that one here. Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Item B, discussion and possible action regarding a transfer in the amount of 5,601 from Police Department Jail Operations account zero, two, two, one, five, five, three, 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 to Attorney Services Account zero, two, two, one, one, five, oh, one, one.
Motion to make the transfer.
Okay, I got a motion to make the transfer from, in stereo.
Yeah.
From Gonthea and a second from Shropshire.
Okay.
Discussion? Call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Okay, item C, discussion and possible action to hire Jarrett Krogan as a Prior Creek Animal Control Officer, Range C, Step One, thirty-five, three, sixty, with a start date of June ninth, 2025. This will fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Robert Price.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Shropshire and a second from Gonthea.
Is that him, Captain?
Breschers here.
Jarrett? I was kind of hoping you weren't one of the petitions that I said wasn't here. I'm kidding, you're good. All right. Any further discussion on that? None, we'll call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, you do know that they are two capacity and dogs need to be adopted out, as do cats, so you've got your work set out for you. That was a shameless plug to go and adopt animals because we are overflowing and we need them. They need homes. And with the start of summer, all the kids are gonna be home to potty train them. What a better time than this week to go spend, what, $46 or something?
Because we all know the kids do the potty training.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, item five, city attorneys report.
You want to hit that addendum first?
Do what? We can do the addendum. Yeah, let's knock out the addendum. I'm sorry, I forgot.
I'll be easier this way.
All right, item one, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution requesting the Oklahoma Tax Commission to collect the hotel motel tax revenue on behalf of the City of Prior Creek.
Motion as stated.
I have a motion from Brown and a second from Gonthea. We have a discussion on that. Okay, let's call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item two, the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code seven dash four dash four camping.
Motion, and can we waive the reading?
We have a motion.
On the first reading, can you waive it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, motion including to waive the reading from Shropshire.
I'll second.
Second from Bradshaw. Discussion? Call for the vote.
I have a question for clarification, just as a reminder. This vote is just further along. We'll actually vote whether to implement it later, correct?
This is the first time we do it.
First reading. Just for information.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
No.
Shropshire?
Yes.
That motion passed. First reading of an ordinance changing and amending zoning classification from residential duplex RD to residential multifamily RM of the property described as follows. Lots number nine and 10 in block numbered four of the Mayor Roach Edition in the Incorporated Town of Prior Creek, Mays County, State of Oklahoma, according to the record or the recorded plat thereof as recorded in book fifteen forty-six at page two hundred, also known as Twenty-Eight Pine.
Motion including the waiving of reading.
We have a motion including the waiving of the reading from Gonthea.
Second.
And a second from Brown. Discussion? For those that were not aware, that's simply, instead of a duplex, they are looking to put a triplex. And so the zoning classification is required to go from RD to RM. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Okay, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution supporting continued participation in Main Street programs.
Motion and also including the correction of the date on the signature page.
Yes, and I have that highlighted. I was gonna bring that up.
Second.
So we have a motion including a correction on that, a second from Shropshire. So this is the agreement, the resolution. This is not a resolution for funding. This is a resolution for continued participation and support. And what Mr. Gonthea is referring to is at the very bottom of that resolution above the signature line, it says passed and approved fifteenth day of April, 2025. So we would change that to today. Again, we appreciate our partnership with Main Street and what they've done for our community, and so. Any further discussion on that? We'll call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Discussion and possible action regarding a grant application from the Prior Area Arts and Humanities Council for Missoula Children's Theater to be held June ninth through June twenty-third, 2025, in the amount of $2,000.
Motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Choya and a second from Brown.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Mr. Gonthea, you absolutely can.
It's, in my mind, it's telling me that the actual, in the packet, it said the thirteenth. Is it actually the nineteenth, the twenty-third, or is it the thirteenth? I think in the packet, it said thirteenth, and I'm not sure. It's just sticking in my head and I don't want it to be an error.
Lisa, do you know the number of the date on that? Are you, you're not with Missoula, though. You're just the other one, the next one.
I don't have a problem proving it, just don't know which date it is.
Hang on, I gotta, I got the addendum packet here.
It says in the grant, say, the ninth through the.
I mean, I may be mistaken, but I thought I read thirteenth.
It did.
We'll go by the dates on the.
The other application is ninth through thirteenth.
Yeah, it says when and where.
So do we want to make that motion to accept it as written in the grant?
Yeah, and even our printout says the twenty-third.
Twenty-three?
It looks like it should have been a one instead of a two.
It's a Scribner's error, imagine that.
Yeah.
It's all right.
No worries.
Okay, so as written, we'll do the thirteenth, the thirteenth.
Yeah.
We'll put an RD on the end of that, so, all right.
Apologies to everyone who didn't know the dates, thirteenth.
Right, all right, further discussion? None, we'll call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item six, discussion and possible action regarding a grant application from Mays County Historical Society Incorporated for the design and implementation of a website for the Kiowa Museum in the amount of $5,000.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Shropshire and a second from Brown. Discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Brown-Kay?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Abstain.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, item five, now we'll go to the city attorneys report. Discussion and possible action to modify the wording of City Code two dash two, A, dash two definitions.
Motion is stated.
And a motion as stated from Brown and a second from Gonthea.
I do have a question, though. I'm not really sure what this is because I don't remember seeing it. I might have missed it.
Sure, it's about, it's, it's about the, on the hotel motel tax.
Oh, okay.
There was discussion during IO and I committee about, at the time, it said three or more bedrooms and it didn't. and it didn't really include like VRVO and Airbnb, places like that, so this should-
So I'll just read this, just to change, it's not very long. Any building or buildings, structure, trailer, or other facility in which the public may for consideration obtain sleeping accommodations, and in which one or more rooms are used for the accommodation of such occupant, whether such rooms are in one or several structures. The terms shall include hotels, apartment hotels, motels, tourist homes, houses on courts, houses or courts, lodging houses, bed and breakfast ends, ends, rooming houses, trailer houses, trailer motels, properties leased or rented for non-permanent residency, apartments and sleeping rooms not occupied by, quote, permanent residence, and all other facilities where rooms or sleeping accommodations or spacing, spaces are furnished for a consideration. The terms shall not include hospitals, sanitariums, or nursing homes, university dormitories, or other educational or charitable institutions.
Part of the resolution that we passed earlier on the O T C is that we will have to give the Tax Commission a definition list of who we are collecting from. So if we're gonna give them one, I feel like we should give them one that's the most inclusive of when somebody's renting a property out for short term.
Do you think you can discuss it, and then since this is actually becoming, do you have a capacity against that?
With an ordinance? Okay.
So this is the discussion before your question, you know, it's a-
Further discussion on that? We'll call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Item B, oh, here we go, guys, sorry. Possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication with the attorney regarding an arbitration request from Kenneth Bennett and the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge one sixteen, twenty-five through seven B four.
Motion, we go into executive session.
Motion, we go into executive session from Gantier and a second from Brishers. When you're ready, call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
We'll return.
I'm going to see if there's, I think there's an executive session.
Item C, Consider Resuming Regular Session. No action taken during executive session.
Motion.
We have a motion from Brashears and a second from Gantier. Call for vote.
Yes.
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 All right. Item B, Possible Discussion and Action Based on Executive Session Pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the Purpose of Confidential Communication with Attorney Regarding Arbitration Request in Kenneth Bennett, The Fraternal Order of Police 116.
Motion.
A motion from Shropshire.
Second.
Second from...
Charles.
Trammell?
Trammell.
Trammell, thank you. I'm sorry, Brown is the only thing that came to my mind when I looked that way. I apologize. A little brain freeze. Call for the vote.
Is that a motion of no action or what?
Bradshaw?
Is that a motion for no action?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Okay, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Counselman Tyler Brown's Expected Upcoming Absences in the Reverent Law Pursued to Section 10 of this City of Prior Creek Charter and 11 O.S. 8108.
Motion as stated.
You have a motion from Brown.
Second.
And a second from Shropshire.
So, I've been accepted into the FBI's National Academy in Quantico, Virginia through my employment. Thank you. It's a command-level management college. No, I'm not an FBI agent when I come back. I have... It is just... If anything, it'll further me getting a second master's degree, but it also helps with management experience and things for your resume. And more importantly, it's required as part of my job at this point since I've been accepted. So, each state and a couple of countries are allotted certain slots every year to go to this school. Oklahoma, I don't know if they had eight or 12 this year, but I was one of the ones that selected. There's four different academies this year. I'm going to one that will start right before the Fourth of July and will conclude right after Labor Day. So, there's me and a major from Oklahoma City that are going from Oklahoma this time, so... When I started researching that I'm going to be gone for this, I spoke with Chase about it. Our charter, I believe, I don't remember his ordinance, I think it was actual charter, said that you need consent from the council for my absence. I'm going either way, so whether you guys consent to it or not, but it reads that your absence be... Have consent of the council. And then, the other one is Title 11, 8108, which I believe, I'm reading from memory, says if you miss more than half the meetings in any four-month period, you are blank from office. Disqualified or... I don't think it's disqualified. I think...
Yeah, just on that.
Okay, so, depending on what occurs during that period, the best I could figure it, I'll miss five out of eight meetings that are scheduled. They're maybe special or something else, and so I believe when I spoke with Chase, he had ran into this issue at another town, and there was... There's a multitude of ways that you guys can choose to handle it. That's going to be your prerogative. But I at least wanted to make everybody aware of where I'm going and what's going on.
So, the charter, well, statute is going to trump your charter, so if he misses half of the meetings in a four-month period, at the end of that four months, he's automatically removed out, and there's anything anybody can do about that. Under your charter, it's 90 days unless the council member comes and asks for permission before it is granted. Otherwise, when he misses his first nine days, he's automatically removed.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, no matter what we do, if he misses four months, a certain amount, he's...
Has some meetings in four months.
Well, that's a three-month period, isn't it?
It's 10 weeks.
Okay.
That I'll be gone.
And that's a rolling four-month consecutive?
Oh, man.
But the reason you have to wait till four months before the automatic kicks in is because you don't know... Special meetings are included in that, and you don't know where your special emergency is with the backseat man or not. Emergency is included, but special meetings aren't. And so, you don't know... He thinks he's going to miss five regularly scheduled, but you don't know if you're going to have special meetings somewhere. And if you have hypothetically 10 special meetings the last week of that four months, and he makes all 10 of those, he's made more than half.
Can... I don't... This is an extenuating circumstance, and I hate to even say this. If he's... If he's forced to come off the council, can he be reappointed?
Yes. Yeah, it's an automatically... It's an automatic removal. It's not a disbarment. In fact, that is what I've seen other councils do.
Because if it's a state thing, there's nothing we can do about it, except we'll handle it after it happens.
Is there any special meetings?
I wouldn't be in favor.
Special meetings for the next two weeks.
So, basically, we should probably let it ride until...
The four months has to pass, I think, before anything, because you don't know what will come up in that time period.
But if you don't approve the 90 days...
Oh, okay. I get you.
Then, 90 days is that four months, so...
But that's 90 days consecutive, right? If he comes at least once during that 90 days, is he still a...
I can't come back. It's mandatory attendance, and I...
Well, he's going to be there.
I mean this sincerely, but...
But I mean, you can miss 90 days straight.
I make $100 a meeting. It's a $600 round-trip flight. Like, I'm not...
No, I'm just saying, but I mean, you said you could be missing five of the eight.
Yes. I'll miss the first one in... I'll miss both in July, both in August, and the first in September, because I won't graduate until the fourth.
But so that means you won't miss...
That won't be 90 days.
That won't be 90 days, would it?
Well, I think the concern's not 90 days. It's the... It's the half in four months.
Yeah. I think... I don't know if it's 90 days or not. My main thing was bringing up what the charter says and what the... What state law says.
And when are you going to...
I don't know that it's 90 days. I'll leave June 27th.
If the council were to deny us a sign, do you want to get in the commissioning? Because he's come in before, which is what your charter says, to exceed that 90 days, knowing that the state statute has a limit of four months. But it would give him more time before the four months. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'm not even sure he's going to miss the first 90 straight.
Well...
I think precautionary, what we're asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, is the 90 days to be approved tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll make the motion that we approve waiving the requirement in the city charter of 90 days.
It's so from the...
If I Brown can attend.
The last meeting that I'll be at until the very next council meeting, it's 80... I think it said 87 days, so... But granted, I'm not... I mean, I'm not gone from that long, but that's the time between one council meeting and the next council meeting. That I... The last one I'll be at, the next one I can be at.
You know, and... Well, and you're traveling. Sometimes things happen in traveling.
Well, it's two week... I mean, I graduate on the fourth, but the first council meeting in September is the second, so I won't... And so, then the next one after that is 14 days, so... But I'll be back probably the sixth or seventh. I'm soon... I mean, I have to drive out there and drive back, so...
And that's when the special meetings begin.
Yeah.
But did you have the original motion?
I made the original motion.
The motion was as stated.
Yeah.
So, that was just for...
So, somebody wants to...
It'll have to be modified.
Well, basically, I'd make the motion that we waive the 90-day requirement of the city charter to permit Councilman Brown to attend the FBI academy... Or, what's the academy?
I don't think you can waive it. I think you have to give me permission.
Or, give permission to exceed the 90 days.
But for him to do that, you'd have to withdraw your motion and...
Yeah, and I don't have a problem withdrawing it.
Who made the second?
So, Tyler's going to withdraw his motion. Who had the second?
Shropshire?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we voted with the 90 days in there like it is. That he has permission to go to FBI academy.
Yeah, basically to exceed the 90 days if we're the academy.
I don't think he can exceed.
Okay, let's get this clear.
Let's get it cleared through Chase, and then we'll go with what his verbiage will be, and I'll second whatever his verbiage is going to be.
Denied, Councilman will speak.
That's right.
I think you're trying to say something along the lines of the council consents to Councilman Brown being absent for the purposes of his...
Employment.
Or you want to say appointment, training?
Yeah.
Employments.
And I'll second Choya's motion.
And Brashears, you got that. Any further discussion on that?
Have fun.
Masters levels, college classes, and PT every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, have fun with that.
Yeah.
All right. Call for the vote.
Brown?
I'll abstain.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, Budget and Personnel.
The 10.
Oh, and I?
July 10 and 9.
And Street Maintenance.
If we're going to have one, it's going to be on May 27th, which is next Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend. And I will not be present at that meeting, so Counselman Smith and Counselman Brashears, if you all are going to have a meeting, you need to get the agenda items to the clerk before the weekend.
Unforeseeable Business. I don't see that we have any. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Oh, my gosh. I got a motion from Brashears and a second from Brown. You can call for the vote when you're ready.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Bradshaw? Yes. Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, we'll call and order the Prior Public Works Authority. Item two, Approve the Minutes of the May 6, 2025 meeting.
Motion.
Mr. Choya.
Hey, I know, I'm going. I'm giving Hannah... I'm giving Hannah a second to catch up. I kind of jumped right in there. So, we got a motion from Choya and a second from Brashear. Any discussion on that? None, we call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item three, Approve Claims for Purchase Orders for the Prior Public Works Authority through May 20th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Brashears, a second from Gantier?
Yes.
Well, we can call for the vote if there's no discussion.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
I have no unforeseeable to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion from Brown, second from Gantier. When you're ready, call for that final order tonight.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier? Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Same.
So, what time is it?
Seven hours.
Fifty-four minutes.